Thank you. Hello, and welcome to this primary candidate forum for candidates for Washington County Commissioner in District Three. I'm Mary Santi, a member of League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area, and I will be your moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages citizens to participate in government. Our goal for this forum is to allow candidates to give their positions on the issues that are important to you, so you can select who to vote for when you join the ballot on August 13th. The two candidates who receive the most vote in this election will advance to the general election in November. And all the candidates who filed to run in this election were invited to participate in this forum. And let me introduce the candidates who are here. There are, to my right, Bethany Cox; to my left, Mark Weems. For our format, candidates will have one minute to introduce themselves. This will be in alphabetical order, and they will be followed by the questions. The questions have been prepared by a committee from the League of Women Voters. Candidates have one minute to respond to each question, and the order will rotate. Starting question will rotate for each question. Candidates each have three cards to use for rebuttals. They may use them after any question, after they both have responded and they wish to add something or correct something. We will hand me the card, and you'll have 30 seconds to make a rebuttal. And following the questions, there will be one minute for candidates to make closing And that will be in reverse alphabetical order. Our timekeepers will show cards of 30 seconds and 15 seconds, and then stop, and at that time, you can complete your sentence. And we expect to finish by 45 minutes. So Bethany, would you like to start with your opening statement?
I would. Thank you, Mary. Our community here in Washington County is changing and it's evolving, and our county board needs to reflect how our community looks today. My name is Bethany Cox. I'm a proud Stillwater resident and a mom of two elementary-aged children. It is my responsibility to do all I can to gain a seat at the table where the decisions are being made to protect the most vulnerable in our community. Not everyone has the desire nor the capacity to hold an elected office. Many families are working multiple jobs just to keep food on the table and their kids in well-fitting shoes. I grew up in a family with those same struggles. So for all those voices that are not at the Tuesday morning board meetings, I will be there representing you and bringing your voice to the table as your new county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark Weems?
Thank you, Mary. My name is Mark Weems. I'm excited to pursue this county commissioner position with sustainable change and leadership. My wife and I live in Lake Elmo. We've called the eastern metro our home for decades, and we're raising two lovely and energetic daughters that attend Stillwater High School. My younger daughter is a scooper at Nelson's, and my older daughter is a lifeguard at Square Lake. So we're committed to this community. My kids are active in our church. We love the community and the charitable organizations such as Valley Outreach. This community is special. It's a great place to live, work, and play, as our motto is for Washington County. And I'd like to just thank the League of Women Voters for their 104-year existence in educating people in voting matters and also inspiring these forums. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll turn to questions now. They were requested on our website, and people contributed them. We had a committee of league members to review them. We will not use questions that are unclear or hostile or of a personal nature. And we have consolidated questions that fall in the same general topic area. So you have one minute to answer, and we'll begin the first question with Mark Weems. What do you believe is the most important role of a county commissioner?
I think for any elected official, it is to be a leader, and that is to be a visionary as well as to be accountable. My mother, who was a career public school teacher for over 30 years and received two crystal apples from the governor, what did need to be the best me that I could be? Brought me and got me involved in local BPOU. We discussed different issues in our local community. My dad was a county commissioner, or county treasurer of our county, and he was a World War II vet. And his point, both my parents' point, was we live in this community. It's a small community in the sense that we all know each other. We live on this beautiful earth. We need to take care of it. We need to make it better than we found it. So in that, I think it's leadership and vision to take us to the next place that we're going in Washington County.
Thank you. Bethany Cox?
Thank you, Mary. I think the most important role of a county commissioner is relationships. To be connected to our community is the importance of this role. When elected, this position, especially District Three, has 12 separate communities that they represent. Stillwater Township, Stillwater, south to Afton, including Lake Elmo, St. Mary's Point, West Lakeland Township. This is a very large district, and they have very different needs from top to bottom, east to west. And so to me, I think it's being connected to the residents that live in these communities, making sure we know what their needs are, what the mayors of these towns are concerned about, what their, you know, districts are looking at watershed-wide, from watershed districts to safety issues. I think knowing the people in these communities and being able to bring their concerns to the county board is probably the most important role of the commissioner, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next question goes first to Bethany. The Washington County budget is more than $370 million. What experience in fiscal management do you have that you will bring if you are elected?
That's a great question. This is a very large budget that these five commissioners oversee. You know, from the small to managing our household budget, if the money's not there, it just doesn't happen, to working at a nonprofit organization where fundraising is my responsibility. So I'm tasked every year in that professional role to raise a certain amount of money, and also as a leader in that company. Then we are also looking at where that money is going and where we can write grants to find more. So I think there's a lot to do with a budget that pushes $4 million. But I think that just looking at it honestly, as a household has to look at their budget, money comes in from different sources, different creative places, and it needs to, you know, flow out in a way that makes sense and that cares for the community.
Thank you. And Mark Weems? Same question?
Thank you, Mary.
Repeat it again?
Oh, please do.
The Washington County budget is more than $370 million. What experience in fiscal management will you bring if you are elected?
Well, I think first off is that we have the public trust in providing the amount of services from law enforcement to transportation to human services. Some of these are mandated, and we basically, probably 80% of our budget is mandated, and we only have the flexibility, maybe in another 20%. Many people in this time, especially our seniors on fixed income, are stressed with, you know, providing for either their mortgage, their meals, or gas to go visit their grandkids. And we need to be really concerned with the working families as well as not to create situations where they're overtaxed, and that we're disciplined and that we choose which things that we're going to do that are priority. And that comes at the will of the board, where the board discusses what are the priorities and where to go. And I will abide by the will of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question goes first to Mark Weems. How would you describe the county's relationship with the Metropolitan Council? What changes, if any, would you like to see in that relationship?
One more time. Oops. Mary, can you give me that one more time?
What, how would you describe the county's relationship to the Metropolitan Council? What changes, if any, would you like to see in that relationship?
Thank you, Mary. The Met Council, wow. In my current job as a state representative, I was very unpleased and unhappy with the Met Council's decision many years ago to expand my hometown, Lake Elmo, really forcing a change, an urban sprawl. When I was selected to be on the Metropolitan Governance Task Force, I went to meet with Chair Welly and also one of the reps, and that is Dr. Gail Cedarburg. And I found them to actually be very responsive, and their understanding that they put communities in the metro sometimes at risk on different things, and they were, I developed a great relationship with Dr. Cedarburg to deal with the issues, especially of water, in our community, Lake Elmo as well as other Washington County communities. And that's key to have a working relationship so that you can come to some type of good agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cox?
Yeah. I currently sit on the Stillwater Planning Commission, and the Met Council has essentially set with Stillwater leaders our comprehensive plan. I think the Met Council serves a very important role in our communities for organized development. I think it's not without its hiccups. I think Lake Elmo's water situation, we still need to work our way through that. But I think a large part of the reason that our communities look the way they are and are not overrun with development is because the Met Council has set guidelines for smart development throughout Washington County. So again, not without its hiccups, but I do feel that it serves a very important role in organized development in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question goes first to Bethany Cox. How would you ensure that county residents have an opportunity to be heard at county meetings?
That's a great question, Mary. Thankfully, in every county commissioner meeting, again, Tuesday mornings, there is an open forum. So there's an opportunity for residents to come to the government center, and if the item is not on the agenda, they can share their thoughts there. I know many of the county commissioners that are currently in their seats also have, for lack of better terms, I'm thinking back to college, office hours. So they have times for residents to join them at a coffee shop or maybe at an office location, so they have the opportunity to share their thoughts and concerns with their elected commissioner. I think maintaining those same kinds of ideas is vital. I don't think open meeting laws are going to allow for removal of that open comment period, but I'm just grateful that my calendar would also then allow kind of those office hours times to meet with residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Weems?
Thank you. That's a great question. I think our job as a commissioner or any elected official is to, of course, represent our residents, and we need to be accessible, and we also need to hear the voice of the people. And that comes in many different ways. Definitely having office hours and doing face-to-face communications as well as the public comment. But kind of in this time period, there is so much electronic communication, whether it's emails or it's postings on your public website or Facebook page. And those are important to maintain contact and understand exactly where people's concerns lie. I just wanted to go back and just say one more thing about budget. I think what's key for us-
If any, would you suggest to reinforce or ensure voter confidence in the elections?
Mary, that's a great question. I, you know, this is one of those things, we are at a place in America that I didn't think we'd ever be at, in Minnesota to a certain extent, where we seem to be divided, suspicious. I think COVID played a role in it, and of course, the murder of George Floyd and the things that came from that with the civil unrest, that people are unsettled, and they need leaders that are balanced, that listen, that work in the middle, in a nonpartisan, bipartisan atmosphere, to assure them that their votes work. We had recent legislation that expanded the ability of voting. I think there could have been a little bit more on the integrity piece to dispel the rumors that our voting system is errant. But some of those things are at the local level, others are at the state level, and I think it's our voice to ensure our citizens that our government works. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cox?
Yeah, voter confidence is important. I think one of the amazing things about Washington County is they manage elections without a hiccup. The training that the election judges receive is second to none. When you go in there to early vote or if you request your ballot, everything is so above board. I think making sure the staff at that, in the election office, are empowered to maintain those high levels, and that that's kind of the excellence, the standard of excellence that Washington County has come to deserve and has come to expect. And so again, whether it's requesting a ballot by mail, whether it's early voting, or whether it's day-of voting, I think those election judges that are there on the day, maintaining security and safety for everyone that walks through, is just of, something Washington County should be incredibly proud of, and I look forward to maintaining that. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll be the first for the next question. What infrastructure needs in the county do you believe are most critical to address in the next five years?
That's a great question, Mary. I'm not going to have the best answer for this. I'm not sitting at the table, hearing the staff, and looking and seeing what their expertise is showing. From where I sit as a resident, I am so proud that the government center is going to be adding the emergency housing facility. So that came through city council here in Stillwater. Incredibly proud that we are going to be able to take care of residents that need that facility. I think then maintaining the funding for that is going to be of vital importance for the commissioners to make sure happens. You know, honestly, my husband and I lived overseas for a while. I would love to see us build more infrastructure like the Gold Line. I love that we're going to have this bus that can move people from Woodbury to Union Station. Every 15 minutes is just incredible. And so having an alternative form of public transportation, I think, would just be fantastic if we could figure out in Washington County for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Weems?
Mary, could you repeat the question again?
What infrastructure needs in the county do you believe are most critical to address in the next five years?
Fantastic. I think on the transportation end, I'll start there. We have a plan for the I-36 moving, all those, kind of the bypasses, overpasses. I was proud to be involved with the Lake Elmo or County Road 17. But we'll be looking at Manning and improving that all the way down to I-94 and the CIP, as well as, I call it I-36. It's like, it's interstate from Wisconsin, as it's a joint project with Ramsey County at Century Avenue, the Red Rock Transit Station Corridor. And I found really, a really neat thing in the sense of the Central Services and License Center down in Woodbury. That's an optimal place to have all those, where you've got corrections, you've got mental health, you've got all those services there. That's a model for the future in the Gold Line as well. I did support and voted for all the Washington County legislative pieces, one of which was the emergency housing, which is key for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question will go to you first, Mark. Do you support Washington County's coordinated response model that partners law enforcement and social workers? Why or why not?
Mary, I'm an avid supporter of our law enforcement team. We've got a great team here in Washington County, the Sheriff's Department- We've got a great team here in Washington County, the Sheriff's Department, as well as the county attorney. We don't have the problems that other communities have that surround us. And that's because we're known for being fair and and tough. I would have to say the new crisis intervention team, when they took a tour, got to see the Emergency Operations Center, as well as a visit with the Crisis Intervention Team, that's a great that's a great team for our time in society now where we see much more mental health issues and we're expecting our law enforcement folks to be able to be a therapist as well as do their law enforcement duties. And and it's well needed. And I'd also like to just congratulate the Sheriff's Department, as well as the Lake Elmo Fire Department. Just recently, we had a lost person, Sandy, Sandy in Lake Elmo. They were on it, and within 24 hours, they found her alive, got her over to the hospital, and she's back with us. So great job with our law enforcement community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cox?
All right, Mary, your question was, do I support a coordinated response model? Can yes just be a complete sentence in that? Yes. Our Sheriff's Department is excellent. And to maintain that, I think this coordinated model only supports the sheriffs. I think what it will also allow our community to do is recruit. I I keep hearing about how difficult it is for law enforcement to bring new people in, new high-quality people in. And I think if we can take a sheriff and we can pair them with a social worker, that only will continue to allow us to bring in some of the best and top-quality law enforcement officers that our community has learned to depend on. So yes, I definitely support the coordinated response model. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're up for the next question. Do you support Washington County's what? Okay, what should Washington County be doing to develop and preserve affordable housing, including senior and workforce housing?
This is a tough nut, Mary. Again, grateful that Washington County has had some thought and is is moving forward the emergency housing facility for 30 adults. All of our communities depend on having affordable housing. I know just within the Planning Commission, we've we've tackled some of these things. In Stillwater, we have the ability for accessory dwelling units. We've loosened up some restrictions, for lack of better words, around that, allowing for apartments to be built above a garage, for example. I think we need to think really creatively about how we add more housing to our communities. We do have some water concerns in the communities that still have room for building. And so how do we how do we balance that with the need for those of us that serve, you know, dinners and teach our children in our communities so that they can be able to purchase a home here? It's actually one of my top priorities and one thing I'm really looking to diving in once I'm elected as your commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Wiems?
Thank you. That's a great question. I I think, you know, of the 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 top things that we take a look at that we we need to understand better in order to solve, housing is one. And affordable housing, also the emergency housing. My experience as a strategist and as a planner is, we need to understand the environment. We need to understand the the amount of people in our community that that need this type of housing. I've had experience with with homeless veterans, with the MDVA, that's the Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs. And their goal this past year was net zero for veterans homelessness. Of course, there's a mental health component there. There's there's also a substance abuse issue where maybe some people are not suitable or they elect not to be in housing. But the key thing is, we need to do, I think, a little bit more of a study to understand the total scope of it and then come up with a plan for the future that is sustainable and affordable.
Thank you. And for you, you'll be the next first for the next question. Washington County has proclaimed July to be Parks and Recreation Month. What do you believe the county's priorities should be for parks and recreation for the next five years and why?
Parks and Recreation. Who doesn't like a Parks and Recreation? We've we've enjoyed Leper, the Lake Elmo Park Reserve, doing cross-country skiing. And my daughters have done some other training there. They do a lot of running. It's a beautiful place. And I I think of one of the, you know, the other gems that we have, we've just picked up the Kelly Farm, adding that to the Park Reserve, as well as with, I think, the DNR doing their wildlife management area. Having, I I think, an eye to understanding the environment and where the opportunities are to preserve green spaces, because otherwise we'll build over everything or we'll do something silly, you know, put another building or a road someplace where maybe this should be be a reserve, a park reserve. So I think it's it's having that up on our up on our heads-up display for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cox?
My favorite topic. Parks and Recreation is important for so many things. First of all, people, right? We want to get out. We want to enjoy our community. Maybe we live in an apartment building and we just aren't surrounded by that much green space. We can go to Lake Elmo. We can go to Big Marine. We can go to these places and just lay in the grass and see the sky. It's amazing. We attract families. We attract visitors to Washington County because of our award-winning parks. And that's just the people side of it. E.O. Wilson says we need to preserve 50% of the planet for the critters. So what we have with the St. Croix National Scenic Riverway, with a national park that runs through our county, is this amazing habitat for birds and butterflies and all of these things that we need for life to sustain on our planet. And so I am just so impressed with the work that our county has done with parks, that our cities are doing with parks. And I will be the biggest advocate I can be to maintain our parks and green spaces for so many reasons. Thank you.
Okay. The next question will go to you. Do you believe there are adequate transportation options available in Washington County for citizens to access healthcare, food, jobs, and other vital services? If not, what suggestions do you have to improve these options?
I think we can do better as a community. I think the entire United States can do better. Our country was truly built on the automobile, and it shows. If you don't have a car, it's very difficult to get to your doctor's appointments, to your job. Heck, have you ever tried to bring groceries home on a on a bus? It's an incredible challenge. And so, again, I think that there's more to do. I think the heavy lift on transportation is the cost that's involved. I think what's amazing about a lot of the nonprofits that I network here within the St. Croix River Valley is that Community Thread has volunteer drivers. So if you have a doctor's appointment, you can submit a request with a volunteer driver. The church community, just here, again, in the St. Croix River Valley, steps up in a big way. Valley Outreach does their share in this area as well. So it's going to be a challenge. I see it as an important part of what our community needs. If we're going to balance that affordable housing, we also need to make sure people can get to where they need to be. Thank you.
And Mark Wiems?
This, another great question, because it's the type of life and lifestyle we want to have in Washington County as we take a look at the demographics that are changing, especially in the top end, where we're going to have a lot more seniors. And I'll I'll be one of those here in the next five years. And transportation is independence. It is dignity. It is about having the ability to take care of yourself. And we need to study this to make certain we're we're ready for it. But in the meantime, I think we can be an advocate for bus rapid transit, for partnership with those non-public entities, the private, our churches, as well as our nonprofits that are here to make the quality of life better. So I think this is a community all type of thing, where it's all hands together, not just a county. County does some of the planning and the organizing, but we need our charitable organizations to help us execute. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go to you first, Mark. What are your hopes for the new Washington County Service Center in Woodbury slated to be completed in 2025?
Well, just, I kind of mentioned that a little bit before it with the groundbreaking. It's awesome that it's it's a one-stop shop. It's got the licensing, it's got the human services, it's got a corrections piece. It's it's got everything. I I often compare what we have here at home with where I was when I was deployed with the military to places that just didn't have anything. And we tried to bring a level of governance, security. And once you have that, then you can provide services. But if people don't feel safe or they they're not accessible, they're not going to be able to get the help. And I think this helps one of our communities and may be a model for other other spots if it's at the end of a transit route. So I have high hopes for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cox?
Thank you, Mary. I think what this service center allows is, as we replace kind of older older facilities, we get new opportunities. We get the ability to put all of these things under one roof. We do get the ability, then, to have it be this one-stop place for our our community to fulfill their needs that they have. And I do think the fourth thought that was that was had to put it on the end of the Gold Line was absolutely brilliant. And so I just think that, again, Mark said a little bit too, could this be the new model as old facilities are kind of moved out and new facilities are brought in, that they have kind of these wraparound services where more more people can be working together to support the residents of our community? Thank you.
Okay. The next question will go directly to you, Bethany. Please describe a situation where you had to work with someone who held different opinions than yourself and how you worked with them.
Yeah, I think every day we have to do that. I have a 10-year-old daughter who always has a different opinion than I do about even just putting her shoes on. But again, just going back to the the work experience that I have, I fundraised for the St. Croix National Scenic Riverway. It's a huge honor. But people use the outdoor spaces for many different reasons. Some people want to preserve them, meaning no one can use the land. And some people want to hunt and fish on the land. And there's a balance that's there. And so being able to communicate with those two groups and share how important it is to preserve it for the future and yet still allow things like hunting and fishing on the land, it can all work together. And so I think, again, that's something that daily I'm working with as I work with donors and and colleagues at other nonprofits and and government agencies as well.
Thank you. Mark Wiems?
Can you repeat the question just one more time?
Please describe a situation when you had to work with someone who held different opinions than yourself and how you worked with them.
Sometimes I argue with myself, so I have to resolve myself at first which way is the best best pathway. There's so many different things I can think of. The one that's probably most prescient at this point is, I have a relationship, a friendship with Vice Chair Sandra Feist, who, in my role as a state representative, were on different sides of the aisle. She had a piece of legislation last year that Veterans Restorative Justice Act, it's an awesome piece. I thought I could make it better. I offered an amendment. She wouldn't take it. I did it about three, four times, did it on the floor. It didn't happen. But I stayed in contact with her, and she's a good person. And she said this year, let's let's take your amendment and let's make that law. And we worked together, got it through, and it's it's law. And my amendment just it just helps on the reporting for those veterans that are going through restorative justice. And I think it's a model for our society on other restorative justice acts. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cox? Oh, you did that one.
Yep, sorry.
Excuse me? Excuse me? I told you. All right. So the next, the the last question goes to you. Is there a significant?
I think it goes to you.
Oh, all right. Excuse me then. You've both answered.
Oh, we both.
You have both answered this question, so the next question does go to you.
It does go to me. That's right. I'm not arguing at all.
Is there a significant challenge the county faces that has not been discussed already in this forum that you would like to bring up? What is it and how would you suggest it be addressed?
You you gave me the wide open. I've got a couple of cards here. I think the the challenge is how we live in this space, how we grow in this space. And obviously, our population is changing. I talked a little bit about our seniors, that 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 is going to grow, also our diverse population, and understanding and interacting and welcoming those that maybe are not from Minnesota, they're possibly refugees, understanding how our system works, and engaging. And I think that takes a vision, that takes time, it takes a it's a community lift. It's all hands on deck for that. I've I'm going to I'm going to throw in one of my extra cards here, because I'm going to go over time on this one. My last job in the-
Do you want to?
Yeah, I'm going to-
We'll have both of you answer first.
Oh, okay.
And then you can give all three in if you want.
Oh, okay, okay. I will, I'll hold off at this point.
Okay. Bethany Cox?
It's a really good question, and I think we talked about a lot of the big things here. We talked about housing, transportation, law enforcement, we hit Met Council. I think one of the challenges that the county faces is to maintain low property taxes. In talking with staff and in talking with the community, Washington County has done an incredible job at keeping the property taxes low, second lowest, I think, in the in the metro area. I think my property values have increased, yay. And what's great about that with the county, though, and with the board specifically, is that my property taxes haven't raised at the same percentage. Mark mentioned earlier, our population is aging, things are changing, and there are fixed incomes, and there are concerns coming from different people who are worried that they're not going to be able to stay in their home because their property taxes might go up. And I am just proud of what the commissioners in Washington County has done to maintain those low property taxes, and I look to continue that into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, you can use all three of them if you want. Take a minute and a half.
Let's let's line up for one minute, and then I'll, if I need another one, I'll let you know. Does that work?
All right.
Yep. So my my last job in the military is out in DC, and I was the strategist, planner, and policymaker for an organization that that provided those those things to all 54 states and territories. 350,000 soldiers were were under that. I didn't, I I just did the strategy piece. One of my good friends, Alfreda, was the Director of Diversity. We had offices near each other. My guys would work with with his folks, and we would we would do a bunch of different things. We did something new. For the first time, we developed a a strategic communications digest and a strategic plan for the Army National Guard in Toto. He was key in that role of providing diversity understanding for our, not just our staff in DC, but also across the 54. He wanted to hold a, okay, I guess I got to go. He wanted to hold a diversity get-together. And it it he did it, and hardly anybody came. My whole team, I suggested they they went. And so we sat down, we did a red a red team event on it. Why didn't it go? And what we found out was, it was the messaging was wrong. It shouldn't have been diversity, it should have been Unity Day, that we're all different but we're together in one mission. And once we rolled that out, it was it was well, well-attended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Bethany? You have any additional?
I do not. Thank you.
Well, then, we will turn to closing statements, and you will each have one minute to summarize your qualifications and positions. And Mark will be the first to go.
Fantastic. Thank you. Again, I'm Mark Wiems. I I believe I'm an asset as your county commissioner, building those relationships with the Met Council, also with the the communities, the cities and townships. And then the other partnerships out there, the Metropolitan Airports Commission and those kinds of things, developing, I think, a shared vision on how we develop over the next five, 10, 15, 20 years. I want to say that I've had a great relationship with Commissioner Carla Bigum. We're kind of different kind of people, but we worked together on the Metropolitan Governance Task Force. And I found her to be energetic, intelligent, funny, and we worked together to get one of the four forums for the Metropolitan Governance Task Force to be held here in the East Metro at Lake Elmo back in December to talk about our water problems and report back to the the House and the Senate to make certain that we could make some good change for the East Metro communities. And so it's having those relationships and being a leader with vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Bethany Cox?
Yes, I had lunch with a brilliant man this week who said, good government needs new people, needs new voices. There's a pride with all of the residents who- new people, needs new voices." There's a pride with all of the residents who live here in Washington County. The quality of life that we are afforded by this county is absolutely amazing. There's a tradition with the Board of Commissioners in this county as well to carry forward, which is how well the county is run. Disagreements happen, but every time, the commissioners can sit together, and they can decide what is best for the citizens of this county, and that's how they move forward. So, I look forward to being at the table, to bringing your voices there. A brilliant former commissioner said, "The core function of county government is to protect the most vulnerable in society," and I look forward to doing that. If you're looking to vote Bethany Cox for county commissioner in November, I do need you to vote today in the primary so that I can also be on the November ballot. I also want to thank League of Women Voters for this opportunity to share my story. Thank you.
Thank you both. This concludes our forum for Washington County Commissioner District Three. Our website, lwv-wbla.org, has listings for all of our future candidate forums and links where you can submit questions for all of them. You can view the recording of this forum on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area. You can also look for it on your local cable channel at times of their choosing. Thank you, and remember to vote in the primary election on or before August 13th. Early voting started June 28th. Thank you.